Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here. And Charles, you're an inspiration, really. That's a lot of work. We were here two weeks ago and discussing medical marijuana, and there were some statements brought up about primary employers. So I did a little research, and I searched at the local city level, and there's 86 centers in this city. I could not find 86 Starbucks, I could not find 86 Walmarts, I could not find 86 Targets or McDonald's. So when we talk about primary employers, I think we are your primary employers. We also heard from the military that some suggested they might leave the state of Colorado. If that's the case, I don't know where they're going to go. Right now, 19 states have laws that have ended prohibition. Since we last spoke, three states have actually passed laws for recreational marijuana, Alaska, Arizona, and Nevada, and even Kentucky. Mitch McConnell has realized that there's a lot of money to be made from hemp. So when we talk about the future of Colorado, when we talk about jobs, we talk about military, right now, the sequester is going to force the military to cut $26 billion. So I think we should actually rely on our primary employers, which are us. The last time I was here, we talked about protecting our society and children and everything. This is my application. This is just one person's application to try to do this business in accordance to the will of the people. I had to submit, anywhere your social survives, the DEA, the FBI, everything's fingerprinted. We are you, we are not criminals. And then I learned yesterday that only two proposals have been approved, one with a ban, the other with a moratorium until November. And I'm wondering, as a businessman and a voter, how can I apply for my new state license in October when you're postponing a vote till November? You have the mandate. This is historic. You really stand with the responsibility to end 76 years of prohibition. You, here, now, have the historic chance to correct a moral wrong, and you don't even need the people because they support you. And I realize some districts may not support it, but I didn't vote for it either. But how can we tell our children that this is America when we can't even respect the vote of the people? So if you look at the map and you look at the city, we are your primary employers, and we are vetted like no other. So please, support us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Morale Sharper.
Hello again, City Council. Everybody has to keep working together. It's the synergy. The whole is greater than the sum of the parts. It's a voice of all of us who are learning the truth, who have to be willing to continue to speak out and work. It's not just to work for freeing the plant. It's a work to free our souls, it's a work to free our spirit and our country. Dr. Bob Melonmead, a professor at the University of Colorado, Colorado Springs, who will teach my endocannabinoids course this fall, spoke these words of truth, and that's why I speak them to you today. My name is Morale Sharper. I'm a mechanical engineering student and sustainable development student, a mathematics tutor and the president of UCCS Students for Sensible Drug Policy. In my last speech to you, I spoke from a mathematical perspective, and today, I'll speak to you from a purely scientific perspective on why we must opt in to recreational cannabis establishments in this community. Cannabicay are a small family of flowering plants. This family has 170 species and 11 genera, including cannabis or hemp, and humulus, also known to the beer community as hops. These two things are in the same family, two different uses that I believe are God-given and very useful to kickstarting humanity. They're in the same genetic family. So as a future engineer and scientist, I ask myself, why isn't this already legal and regulated? We have an opportunity now to do that responsibly. I understand the concerns with ballot measures and needing to vote in taxes, and I am confident that we, as a community, can take the leap and know, based on the success of medical marijuana, that we can do this and we can responsibly go about this. The diagram on the overhead shows the benefits that are legally recognized of various cannabinoids that interact with our human body, human body's endocannabinoid system. We have medical marijuana. I will stand here firmly and say it's saving lives, and I'm so happy. We have an opportunity to have safe recreation. As the president of Soonish for Sensible Drug Policy, we stand for harm reduction and overdose prevention. There is no case of overdose on cannabis. And I hope that you will stand for science. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Rizzi.
Hello again, City Council. Snyder, Martin, Miller, Bennett, King, Gable, Pico, Collins, and Knight. I think we hit it here. The people want this, and they're behind you guys. I'm still trying to figure out why you guys just aren't running down the road full speed in support of this. I wanted to just point this out here. It's an article, I didn't make two copies, so you're just very good. It is an actual article, and I can send an email, but it says, "The Pentagon lies fears about local marijuana. Colorado Springs businesses, business leaders and retired generals have been waging a public relations campaign suggesting the military might cut back assets here if City Council doesn't ban retail sales of marijuana, now permitted under Amendment 64." Well, that's news to the Pentagon, and I quote, "I wouldn't think so," said Department of Defense spokesman Lieutenant Colonel Tom Crossen. Military personnel are still subject to the Uniform Code of Military Justice, which clearly prohibits marijuana use. They can't use it, and we all get drug tested. But we won't move assets out of the states where it is legal now, and I think that's the biggest point. That's really all I have to say. And hold on, I wrote one more thing. Yeah, let's get off the military, let's get off the special interest groups and the power-hungry politicians, and let's work together with the people to do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Steven, Thomas Abbott.
Are we talking about Amendment A64 as well, the retail sales? I did not make a copy. I'll show you briefly, but you probably have to be a pharmacist and a higher-growth exec to decipher it. Greetings, City Council members and the rest of you. I might have trouble reading it myself. But I believe we should allow the retail sales of marijuana here. The citizens voted for it. It only passed by 10 votes in the city, but it did pass by a 55% to 45% margin in the state. My grandmother was a complete teetotaler all her life, but she felt that prohibition was the worst thing that ever happened to this country. That was what really made drinking alcohol a little bit more even accepted by people at the time. I think if she were alive today, she'd probably say the same about marijuana. She told me that we are a constitutional republic, not a democracy. What that means is we're a constitution of laws rather than men. In other words, the people of Colorado passed an amendment to the Constitution to permit the retail sales of marijuana. For those who have a moral issue with this, Pat Robertson came out in support of legalization of marijuana sales as well. And then, for the first time in American history, over 51% of the American people have voted in favor of legalizing marijuana. When the military people spoke last month, they were talking about the codes of conduct, and I watched a video replay of the council meeting, and it's really not up to us to babysit the members of the military. They have a much more strict code of conduct than we do as American citizens, but it's not up to them to impose their rules upon us. If we don't have recreational sales legalized here in stores, that's not going to decrease the demand for it. They'll find it somewhere, they'll find it underground, and when they find it underground, it won't be regulated. They'll be buying other drugs that these people have. That's how it becomes a gateway drug. I'm a, I should have told you earlier, I am a businessman. I'm the mad planter here in Colorado Springs. I've been in business since 1974, started out as the greener on the corner of Boulder and Teyhoun, and I've had to go through a lot of the council's regulations.
Thank you. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ross Long.
Good afternoon, and thank you for allowing us this public comment again today. I'm here to speak on the Amendment 64 issue, and I'd just like to, I remember about two weeks ago, we heard from leaders of the Police Department and their concerns of mostly just impaired driving and how recreational cannabis use would affect that. Well, I don't really, they really didn't bring any numbers. I understand here in the state that impaired driving convictions are way down, ever since we've passed medical marijuana, and that's true in the city also. When I talk to policemen on the street, they tell me privately that they're actually relieved that they don't have to go out and spend six or eight hours on a misdemeanor drug charge for marijuana, which ultimately can ruin a person's life. They're relieved that they can work on more serious crimes. And as I've just found out, I see that crime is down, violent crime is way down. Well, it's not way down, but we're at least solving those crimes, 94% better than any other metro area in the state of Colorado. So that goes to reason that we have more police resources now that aren't tied up with misdemeanors, they're tied up with serious crimes, as they should be. So I would just hope that you look at this reasonably and do what the people of Colorado Springs and the state of Colorado have already voted for, and go ahead and opt in and bring us lots more money, because that's what it should do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Garrett, and Garrett, I'm not sure if you're sure of your last name, Crone?
Coon.
Coon.
Close enough. I have chicken scratch. It's a curse of being a college student, I suppose. City Council, thank you all so much for this opportunity to speak before you today. As I said, I'm a college student, attending UCCS, grown up here in Colorado Springs, graduated from Rampart High School, and I don't think that there's anybody that can spend as much time in this community as I have that hasn't developed a deep sense of appreciation for the blessings of living in this country and living in this community. We can have serious disagreements about issues like this and actually come together and discuss them civilly, but it doesn't seem that there ought to be a disagreement about this issue. It seems that while we do have the rights to come together and discuss things in a public forum, that the citizens of Colorado have also ceded to themselves or declared that they're ready to be deemed responsible to have the right to use and to sell recreational marijuana. I am here, there's been any number of excellent reasons for why pot in and of itself is good or we can draw more revenue to the city or anything like that. All of that may very well be true. I'm just simply here to urge you to listen to that reason and ask yourselves, on what side of history do you want to be remembered as having stood on this issue? In an age that seems to be kind of tenebrous with the tone of rising righteous indignation against the excesses of government overreach, this is a case in which the citizens of this state have said, "Not here, not anymore. Government, keep your hands off." I urge you, and respectfully trust, that you will find the wisdom of your citizens to be worth heeding. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Judy Darcy.
Hello. Just have a paper for you. Sorry. Okay, so that's a map of the Amendment 64 voter saturation. That really dark part is the center of Colorado Springs. That's where the Colorado Springs voters voted. Voters are working on recalling representatives that do not represent the will of the people. It is time to stop circumventing your constituents and just do your job. Stop banning things. Stop legislating morality. Start protecting the freedoms of the people in your districts. This is not about marijuana, it's about freedom. In my neighborhood, it means freedom from the dealers on the corner. It means regulation of sales in a storefront rather than dangerous people in my backyard. Whatever argument you use to take someone else's freedom will someday be used to take yours. I was at the town hall meeting. I heard the citizens speak. The majority of the citizens that waited for hours to be heard told you to opt in. The voters in Colorado Springs already passed this. I went to the polls in November to cast my vote. 269,392 voters in El Paso County voted on Amendment 64. Of those, 206,871 were in Colorado Springs. The issue has been settled already. 105,909 people in Colorado Springs already told you to opt in. This should not even be a debate. According to KOAA 5 article, the council decided to draft two resolutions, one to ban retail sales and another to institute a six- to 12-month moratorium on sales until after the November election, in which voters will decide on how much to tax marijuana sales statewide. They'll choose one of those options at their meeting on July 23rd. No draft for opting in? Please do the right thing. Opt in because the people have already voted. Opt in because you represent the people. Opt in for the tax revenue. Opt in to put the dealers in my neighborhood out of business. Opt in for freedom. I also brought with me the responses that those of you who've bothered to respond to our, oh, I'm sorry, I'm Judy Darcy, I'm Secretary of the El Paso County Libertarian Party. Four of you who are serving bothered to respond to our questionnaire. Jill Gable, who's also my representative and who I have been told already supports this, when we asked about Amendment 64, and do you agree with the voters or are you against it, she said, "I voted for 64 and support it locally." I'd read the other four, but thank you to Mr. Knight and Mr. Pico and Ms. Collins and, oh, I'll get out of here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maureen Barrett.
My name's Maureen Barrett. I'm going to change the subject here. I'm a professional environmental engineer. I have a business in Colorado, Air Expertise Colorado. I've been modeling air quality and from coal-fired power plants for multiple years now, modeling for more than two decades. And I just want to let you know that in terms of coal-fired power plants, there's, and also all power plants, there are federal models that can be used to estimate what impacts are. And these models are quite precise. It's what all new facilities that our energy plants and other facilities need to use in the state of Colorado. I recently ran this federally-approved procedure for the Martin Drake Plant, and the SO2 impacts from the Martin Drake Plant are on the figure that you see here. We see SO2 one-hour exceedances in the order of six, five to six times what the standard is. And as you can see, I'm not, I don't think you can see it on the picture, if you don't There are multiple elementary schools, which are in the areas of multiple times the standards worth of exposure. I don't know if you're familiar with the health-based standards, but with Martin Drake, we can be quite sure that in fact it's operating in compliance with its permit limits. But operating in conformance with permit limits is a very different thing than operating in conformance with health-based standards. This is a grandfathered power plant. It's never really been required to operate in conformance with health-based standards, and these are the results that we see. These are actually the permitted limits for the Martin Drake Plant, and you can see Memorial Hospital and likely multiple elementary schools are seeing exceedances of one-hour standards at multiple times, the levels at which we see health effects. I know there are some monitoring results in the city, and what I'd like to say is, I can easily show you how monitoring results are often manipulated and misinterpreted to undermine modeling results like this. And all I'd like to do to ask you is to immediately take some action and require some kind of modeled compliance plan for this facility so that we can be assured that in fact, when it's operating, we don't have any impacts in excess of health-based standards. Thank you very much.
Doug Bruce.
Good afternoon. I saw a copy of what your auditor sent you, Denny Nestor, a chart about the proposed council budget and the benefits. I came up with 13 items here worthy of abbreviated comment. This year, your budget is a third more than last year, and they want to keep that tremendous increase, $96,000 increase. They want to preserve that. There's no identification of the benefits, including your benefits, which are expressly prohibited by Section 1320B of the Charter unless mandated by state or federal law. So they're all just lumped in, and those items are left blank. $7,600, the purpose is identified as frames for council resolutions. If you didn't have all these silly, symbolic, meaningless resolutions, you'd save $7,600, plus the time at the council meetings to go through that, time that you take away from the citizens by imposing a three-minute limit on citizen comments. Leadership pikes peak, $6,000. $5,000 for somebody to facilitate your retreat. All facilitated for free. Just don't have one, okay? Just, I don't know why you want to keep retreating, why don't you just surrender? $3,350, the only explanation given is sign language interpreter. I've only seen a sign language interpreter here once in the last couple of years. $1,500 for mileage for two people on the council staff. I question whether that is compensating them for commuting to work, which people in the real world don't get. They don't get their commuting costs paid. $4,500 for snacks for council meetings. I mentioned that to you before. $4,500. It's prohibited by 1320B, period. There's no federal mandate that you get snacks. $338,000, almost half of the total, for memberships. And these are memberships in groups that you shouldn't be belonging to in the first place. One of them you're not really qualified to belong to, which is the Chamber of Commerce, which has been changed to a name with the word "business." You're not a business, you're not commerce. You shouldn't go there, and we shouldn't have to pay the dues so that you can go there and have more free meals at indirect taxpayer expense. $4,000, two people to go to two meetings at 500 a piece. Two times two is four, times 500 is 2,000.
Please wrap up.
But you listed at 4,000. Number 11, I only got three. $250 for the Gazette. I can call up and get the Gazette for under $100.
Doug, three minutes is up.
There's two other items, but it's $864,000.
Thank you. Thank you. Samantha Dinwiddie.
They don't want people to finish.
Hello, thank you for having me. I'm Samantha Dinwiddie, here to go back to A64. I come from South Carolina. I moved here in January 2010, where my father is Deputy Chief of Police of Beaufort City Police Department in South Carolina. My husband is an Army captain. He deployed to Iraq. He came back. He's now working as a reservist and works in Denver at SunCor Energy. I am a medical marijuana patient. Two years ago, I could not leave my apartment. I was scared. I was terrified of the outside world. I couldn't be around people. And I finally had to tell my husband and my family my big secret. I am a domestic abuse and rape survivor. And things hit the fan. I went to therapy, and I heard the words again, "Samantha, try the marijuana. If you can get it safely, it might help." And so I looked into getting my reg card about a year ago, and I can say that now I can stand in front of you without pain. I had the courage to walk in the door and talk to you, and that is a big improvement for me. And I want to talk to you about safety. I had never smoked before I moved here because I knew it was not safe to obtain it. And we have voted to allow safe and legal, regulated marijuana, but that means nothing if we don't have legal access. This, to me, is a safety issue. People will continue to go to drug dealers if you do not opt in. I could never do that. I could never walk into a stranger's house. I could never go into a situation that I knew was not safe to get something that helps me. The bottom line is, is that we have approved it, we want it to be safe, and we need these establishments to make it safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Gallagher.
My name is Tom Gallagher. I didn't intend this little tidbit of advice, but do you really want to put Memorial Hospital and marijuana on the same agenda? Haven't acted on that, you may want to choose a different day when that issue comes up. Fact, there has been sale of recreational marijuana use in this community for over 76 years. It happens whether you regulate it or not. What Amendment 64 did is it opened the door for a regulatory model. 1317, I just, why you would create another regulatory scheme when you have what was already acknowledged as the best regulatory model in the country? You have to ask the people in Denver why they did that. What I'm here is, don't bury your head in the sand. The fact is that marijuana has been used and abused in this town since it became illegal, since the first conviction for violation of the Marijuana Tax Stamp Act in 1936, which happened in Weld County, Colorado. It's only fitting that since Colorado was the first one to make it illegal, that Colorado would be the first one to correct that error. And this is where leadership is involved. Hey, I, you know, months ago, you said you wanted to look at a deliberative process, and that's the road you need to go down. The opt-in model was very easy, and I wouldn't opt in with what the state put down with Amendment 64. The moratorium, it's a de facto moratorium. I mean, you can pass it if it makes you feel better, but the fact is that nothing can happen until January 1, 2014. Your October 1 deadline is met because you already have retail sales of marijuana in Colorado Springs using the medical marijuana model. I'm here to advocate for that deliberative process. It's how we got medical marijuana. It's, you have myth, you have pseudoscience, you have real science. To ferret through all that is going to take, you know, dedicated citizens, working in a committee environment with your blessing, and it's going to take a couple of months. It might take five. It's what it took the last time. And I would like to see that model or that option debated, that why can't we have a regulatory model? Why, what is it about Colorado Springs that makes us incapable of finding the solution to a problem that's plagued us for 76 years? Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Mark Slaw.
Good afternoon, President King, President Burton, Bennett. It's good to see your smiling faces today, and I love the cowboy hat. It's good to see your smiling faces today, and I love the cowboy hats. Just wanted to present to you guys. I sent you over an email this morning just about the 66 pages of rules and regulations that came down the state. And we heard from the city attorney yesterday that the state did indeed meet their deadline. This has been summarized for you to make it a little bit more palatable. So, you've got 66 pages. I sent you an email, but this is about five pages that I'd like to hand out to you, so you all have a copy. Heard a lot today about safe access, public safety. In this comprehensive regulatory regime, we've taken 200 pages worth of a manual, and they've condensed it down to just 66 pages in emergency rules. So, my job just got a little bit harder as far as it goes in training these individuals on what the new standards are under the state of Colorado. Tom Gallagher said it best. We have the most comprehensive regime in the nation. This is the most sophisticated model out there. So, you go from licensing the actual requirements of what a business owner takes to get into this industry. Certainly, the black market has none of those barriers to entry. Nowadays, it's almost month after month you hear from new people that are interested in getting involved in Colorado's industry. And those barriers to entry are not getting any cheaper either. You're looking at $250,000, $300,000 at least to start one of these businesses. So, there's not likely going to be a repollification like we saw in the caregiver days of 2010. More than likely, you're going to have safe control over this because, one, you can limit the number of licenses you issue, first and foremost. Those 86 businesses in town, you can go, "Yeah, we only want 86." Okay, and transition over the existing people. There's dual-purpose policies that are outlined in these regulatory, in this regulatory structure, I believe, page three or four. You can take a look there as well. And it talks about letting the same existing facilities do both recreational and medical. There were some questions yesterday on how do you cap that when you're not tying patients to plants? And the state is coming down with a tiered licensing system. So, under certain amount of licenses, you grow a certain number of plants or you grow it by square footage. That's how they're going to be controlling this at the state level. So, obviously, we have some more detailed policy discussions coming down the line. And yesterday, we were talking about a moratorium. Tom is right, nothing can open until January anyway. But if we do want to wait and see what the tax measure vote is, even though it does have strong support in the polls, or we want to formulate a citizen task force to look at the specific points of policy, that's all work we can still do with the hope that we're still going to follow what the people of Colorado Springs and the state really want, which is to regulate marijuana like alcohol. And clearly, that's been done. There's been a lot of heavy lifting done at the state level for you. We've been involved in that. We're here as a resource. We want to make sure that you fully understand what's going on. To answer a couple of concerns, there was a mention yesterday that if the taxes are too high, we're not going to be able to compete with the black market. Would you like me to address that real quick? Bennett, you asked it.
This, he's fine. Okay, thank you, Mark.
All right, thank you for your time.
Appreciate it.